Okay, is the city clerk ready? Council members, okay. Thank you for your patience. Good afternoon. Welcome to the three o'clock PM session of the August ninth, two thousand twenty-two meeting of the Santa Cruz City Council. And I would like to ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members Kalentory Johnson.
Present.
Holder. Absent. Cummings.
Here.
Brown. Councilmember Myers.
Present.
Vice Mayor Watkins.
Here.
And Mayor Brunner.
Present. Thank you. We will begin today's meeting with a presentation from Central Coast Community Energy Annual Update. And I'd like to invite Gabe Ruiz, Senior Commercial Accounts Manager of the Central Coast Community Energy. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Much appreciated. Thank you for the council's time today. I'm gonna go ahead and just start to share my screen here. But just wanted to introduce myself. Again, I'm from Central Coast Community Energy. I'm the Senior Commercial Accounts Manager. I do a lot of work in the R-Tri County here in Santa Cruz, San Antonio, Monterey, but also working with a lot of our ag customers. A lot of my focus and my time goes up and down the central coast. So a pleasure and I appreciate everyone's time today. One second here, I have my own technical difficulties. And just to confirm, everybody can see my screen.
Correct. We can see. Thank you.
All right. So thank you again. So this will be this year's two thousand twenty-two annual member agency update for the city of Santa Cruz. I like to start with just some details on how a CCA operates. I think it's good for new council members and the public attending this event to understand that. So really what we do as an agency is we go out and we procure the energy. So we buy the energy that goes to the grid. We do so from clean and renewable sources and also making sure that we are providing this energy at an affordable price. So really making sure the community has access to cleaner renewable energy at an affordable price. You still work with your investor-owned utility, PG&E in this case. So they still maintain the transmission lines, substations, and billing. But they, you know, intermeter reading. So that is still all done by the investor-owned utility. One thing that we do is the revenue that we generate from the generation portion of your bill, we reinvest back into the community. So right now, there are twenty-three CCAs in the state, serving over eleven million customers. And I think that's an important piece to understand that we're seeing a lot of growth when it comes to community choice. Really, the goal of the CCAs is to support their local governments and doing a couple of different things, meeting their climate action goals, providing residents and businesses within your area with more energy options and really just to ensure local transparency, accountability, and to drive economic development. You can see that over more than two hundred cities and counties throughout California have chosen to participate in a community choice aggregate. So the agency is made up of thirty-three members. We call them member agencies, if you may say, throughout the presentation. Member agencies are the cities and counties that have collectively agreed to provide their communities with cleaner energy. CCCE is the electricity provider to over four hundred thousand customer accounts along the central coast. Geographically, we are the largest CCA in California and represent a very diverse community. So within each of these communities here, we participate in different business and industry associations and as well as community-based organizations. So I'm also pleased to say that we have a thirty-fourth community that will soon be joining Central Coast Community Energy. The city of Tascadero recently voted to join as a member, and we look forward to their future enrollment. So we are governed by two voting bodies. That is our policy and operation boards. These boards are made up of city managers, mayors, council members, and other elected officials. Voting seats are determined by population. So just as an example there, if there are any, you know, any member agencies over fifty thousand people have their own voting seat, any below fifty thousand is grouped together. So you can see there, just as an example, of course, the city of Santa Cruz maintains a voting seat throughout our boards. And then as an example, you can see below that, you know, the other cities are grouped together. They can be shared. So, you know, the rotation, how many years one city, you know, staff member may be on the board is completely up to the group there. And we also have our community advisory council. So they're really made up of qualified and committed individuals who have important connections to our diverse community. They serve as an advisory body to our policy and operations board and to CCCE staff on different matters, policy recommendations, customer programs, and community engagement. So Central Coast Community Energy serves over ninety-four percent of eligible customers in our service area. Some of the accomplishments that we've achieved in the last twelve months, we've increased our three-C prime. That's our one hundred percent clean and renewable option by forty percent. We've increased enrollments, making us again the largest geographically, the largest CCA in the state by twenty-five percent. And our agency is right now, we are staffed with around thirty employees between two offices in Monterey and now San Luis Obispo. In two thousand eighteen, or since two thousand eighteen, CCCE has allocated over twenty-seven million dollars to local energy programs and has provided fifty million dollars in customer savings. And we've also established there in our clean energy topic, we've also established there increases. So those numbers that you see on the clean energy side, we've actually increased our renewables. That number has increased by forty-nine percent and battery storage by twenty-three percent. And also something I always like to point out, which is, I think, kind of a great achievement from our executive staff here, we were able to receive an A rating from the S&amp;P. We were the first CCA in the state to receive an A credit rating. And really, this just allows us to do more for the communities that we serve. So really, our goal is clearly stated, right? We are trying to provide our areas with, you know, cleaner renewable energy, one hundred percent of that energy coming from clean renewable sources by twenty thirty. In order to reach that goal, we have agreed to approximately over a billion dollars in long-term solar plus storage contracts. We have executed fourteen contracts with cleaning energy renewable providers. These projects that we are looking at are right now our goal. So those four, those projects here with that goal of sixty percent by twenty twenty-five, right now, we are going to be able to reach that goal with the contracts that we have in place. And as more contracts come on between now and twenty thirty, that'll get us to that goal of one hundred percent clean and renewable. So some big changes that we've had, historically, our rates have followed what we call the IOU minus model. So what we did essentially was take, simply, we take the investor-owned utility rate and we apply a percentage discount. So one of the things you can see there, you know, obviously, the years and how that has increased over the years. But something that I'd like to shine light on is, you know, in light of the pandemic and what's happening in our communities, we felt it was our role to create more value for our customers through a rate reduction. So our board unanimously voted to cut fifty percent of all three CE electric generation charges for the months of May and June in two thousand and twenty. So, you know, with our customers in need, we just, we just figured this was an action that would provide a discount at a critical time. Since then, throughout the year, we have been providing a two percent discount to our customers below the investor-owned utility rate. One thing, so we have had some changes to that. So with our new model, we call this our cost-to-service model. Really, why it came is, people came to us and said, okay, that's great that you're providing this good discount to us, but the rates keep going up. And as the rates increase, we, following that model, have to increase our rates as well. So to the end, we have created a new generation rate that will no longer follow the investor-owned utility generation rates with the goal of providing predictable, stable rates over a three-year period. We've simplified what we believe is the rate process. We feel that this is fair rates across all rate classes and staying competitive as well, so that we're still competitive over a twelve-month period in practically all rate classes. So it's very important for people to understand and the community to understand. To, to, to point out where your money is going, right? We talk about accountability. What we do is, we would say, of your bill, about ninety percent of that goes to what it costs us to buy the energy for a customer. Then what we do is we have four percent that goes to our energy programs. We have another three percent that goes to our rate stabilization fund. That is the fund that we partly dipped into to provide that fifty percent discount in twenty twenty. And then another three percent goes to administrative costs, contracts that we have and such. So just to highlight some information here from the city itself. These are the number of enrolled customers, commercial and residential. Ninety-six percent enrollment in the city of Santa Cruz, which is fantastic. That is above our average. And I would say, you know, one of, one of the highest enrollments that we have throughout our service area. And just to highlight some of the programs that your residents have taken part of. We, this year, we had a hundred and sixty-one applicants for our Electrify Your Ride program. That consisted of e-bikes, electric vehicle purchase, a rebate that we offered, commercial and at-home charging as well. And then we also had a construction electrification grant. So this money went towards any project that was an affordable unit, affordable housing project, and all-electric. So these are the programs that we offered this year. Our fiscal year begins in October, but we have ag electrification, school bus electrification. School bus electrification, I believe we have nearly a dozen buses that are going to be hitting the ground, I think, by the end of the year. So we're very much looking forward to that. You know, we have a new program now, our residential electrification program that is going to provide rebates and incentives to customers to make switches in their homes. And then also, we have a battery storage project that I will speak a little bit more about. But what I do like to highlight again is you can see in terms of funding towards our energy programs and how much money we are devoting and reinvesting back into the community. That has increased over the last four years. So here's the Electrify Your Ride program. Just a couple of things that I'll point out here is that, again, this is, this is good for commercial and at-home charging. There is additional rebates available to anybody that is income-qualified. So it's, you know, if you're income-qualified, you can get up to four thousand dollars. One thing that I really liked that we did on our website was that we were able to, if you went there to look, you know, to, to apply for this rebate, we would actually connect you with other organizations that provided rebates as well. All of our rebates are stackable, right? So if you, if you want to use our rebate and rebate from another organization, you are more than welcome to. So another project that we worked on, we had an RFP that was put out earlier this year. This is for local storage projects. We are working, right now, we are working with, I believe, eight member agencies. We had fifteen in total member agencies submitting ninety sites for this project. I think we are down to eight, and the sites are being assessed at this point. But really, what this is going to allow us to do is to store energy at cheap times and put it back onto the grid at expensive times, allows us to reduce the cost to our customers. Then in terms of our community engagement and outreach that we've done, we did ten farm worker outreach events this year. We worked with local radio stations, working on educating the certain communities, specific communities. We do a lot with other community-based organizations. There's a lot with chambers and other business associations as well. But I think, you know, we have a, we have a very, again, I go back to how diverse our community is. We have a very strong focus on making sure that, you know, all, all, you know, all income levels have access and are aware of the programs that we offer. It's very important that, you know, all of our customers, you know, take part in our programs and take advantage of the money that's there for them. And then lastly here, I just wanted to share another bit, you know, in terms of, you know, any, any, any services that the agency is looking for, you know, whether it is for marketing, legal services. This is our vendor registry that we developed. So what we like to have local businesses, so the money that we spend on these contracts stays local. So we are working with different chambers, getting the information out there because we need these companies, these local businesses, to register on our website. Once they do, when we're looking for services, we can go and communicate with them again, trying to keep the money local. So a big focus on what we've been doing here at Central Coast Community Energy. And at this point, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you so much, Gabe, for that information and those updates. Very helpful and interesting. Would you be able to share those slides with us?
Yes. Yes, I believe.
City clerk has them?
Yes, yes.
I will look to any council members for any further questions. Councilmember Brown?
Thank you. Thank you, Gabe, for the presentation. It's great to hear about the growth that's happening with three CE. Having been on the policy board when we started up with Monterey Bay Community Power in the early days, it's exciting to see all of the growth and the great work you're doing. I am, I'm really interested in the storage projects and the kind of movement into that, that space because I know there are some real challenges with that related to not just resource challenges, but regulatory challenges and else, you know, other, other issues. And so I just, if you could talk a little bit more about that and maybe a little bit about the projects that you're pursuing right now and what the thinking is for expanding upon storage capacity and, and support for, for local jurisdictions interested in that.
Absolutely. So I would say, so we are looking at the, I guess, the, we put out was to get about, we're looking for one, the, the goal, I'm sorry, the goal is to look at each individual project, anywhere between one to five megawatt battery storage project. Overall, we want to get to a hundred megawatts of locals, locally-stored batteries. I know, I know that in the process right now, we are looking at, I think we've narrowed it down to eight sites, and they are just going through verification, making sure that it is the right site. This is the best for us if we need to pick different sites for whatever reason. I don't know exactly where those sites are currently at the moment, but I know that'll be shared once that has been decided. You did, you mentioned that with some of the challenges, and of course, there's resource challenges out there right now and supply chain issues, and there's no doubt that that has had been a fact, not just for us, but across the industry. But I will say that, you know, recently, that the standalone storage is now a tax credit. That is information that I just received earlier today. So we're still kind of diving into that a little bit to understand what that really means and how we can take advantage of that to really drive more of these projects forward.
Thank you. That's wonderful news.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. Any other questions for Gabe? Okay. Wonderful. Thank you so much for that update and annual presentation.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Can the city clerk make a note that Councilmember Goldar is now present? Thank you. Welcome. Okay. Now we move on into the agenda. And the presiding officer's announcements. I have a few announcements. The first announcement I have is a community celebration this week. It will be Thursday, this Thursday, August eleventh, at La Barranca Park. And that is located at seven hundred Bay Street. This is the groundbreaking for Coastal Rail Trail Segment Seven, Phase Two. I believe Councilmember Brown and Councilmember Goldar will be in attendance with me as well as other local people and festivities and groundbreaking. We have a poster up here on the slide, so you should be able to see that. It is from twelve fifteen to twelve forty-five PM, and there will be free bike valet and parking. All the details are on the city website if you have further questions. So we hope to see you on Thursday. The next announcement I have is from PETA. PETA is the People for the Ethical Treatment of Animals. And the US PETA has named the city of Santa Cruz as one of the top ten vegan-friendly beach towns of two thousand twenty-two. And they listed ten cities. We are in the top five, actually, and preceded by San Diego, California, West Palm Beach, Florida, Charleston, South Carolina, Santa Cruz, and Newport, Rhode Island. Moving on, today's meeting is being broadcast live on community television channel twenty-five and streaming on the city's website, cityofsantacruz.com. Our rules of decorum are on the window ledge to my left if you are joining us in person. It's my job to keep the meeting running without disruption, and we ask that you respect your fellow citizens when you are inside or outside of council chambers. For the consideration of our community, please stay home if you have any symptoms of a cold or flu or feeling unwell in any way. If you are joining us virtually today and wish to comment on an agenda item, call in at the beginning of the item you are wanting to comment on using the instructions on the screen at the time. Please mute your television or streaming device once you call in and listen through the phone. Please note, there's also a delay in streaming. So if you happen to continue to listen on your television or streaming device, you may miss your opportunity to speak. Also, when it's your time for public comment, please raise your hand. If you're virtual, you can dial star nine on your phone or select the raise hand feature in the webinar controls on your computer. If you are joining us in person, you can sign in at the front podium at the clipboard. Please note that public comment today is heard only on items that council is taking action on and not on regular updates and reports. The items that will be open for public comment during today's meeting are items number ten through twenty-nine on our agenda. All right. That concludes my announcements. I'd like to ask the council members if there are any statements of disqualification today. And let me check virtually. Councilmember Myers, none. Thank you. Okay. So there are none. I'd like to ask the city clerk to announce any additions or deletions to the agenda.
There are none.
Thank you. And I'd like to call on the city attorney to report on our closed session this morning.
Yes. Good afternoon, Mayor Brunner, members of the city council. This afternoon, the council met in closed session in a hybrid format at twelve thirty PM to consider the following items. First, before convening the closed session, the council voted to refer two items of real property negotiations to closed session. First being city-owned property located on Mount Herman Road in Scotts Valley bearing assessors' parcels numbers zero-two-two-seven-two-one-zero-seven-zero-eight and zero-nine, commonly referred to as the Sky Park property. Second item was the real property at three-three-three Locust Street bearing assessors' parcel numbers zero-zero-five-zero-three-three-zero-three. On that item, Councilmember Myers, appearing remotely, announced that she would be refusing herself from consideration of that matter due to a conflict of interest and did not participate in the closed session discussion. Closed session items were as follows. First was a conference with legal counsel involving liability claims. Claims of Denise Susan Barr. And second claim involving Progressive West Insurance Company. Those items are also listed as number sixteen on your consent agenda this afternoon. Item four was a conference with labor negotiators involving the following, well, involving all bargaining groups, CIU temp, CIU service employees, mid-managers OE three, supervisors OE three, fire management, fire IAFF, police management, EOA, and executives. There was no reportable action on that item. Item five was a conference with legal counsel concerning existing litigation. First item of existing litigation is entitled the City of South Miami versus DeSantis. By motion, council unanimously voted to join in an amicus curi beef being prepared by County of Santa Clara on that item that's currently pending in the Eleventh Circuit U.S. Court of Appeals. Council also received a report from legal counsel on two other items of pending litigation. First being City of Santa Cruz versus the UC, or the Regents of the University of California. That's the city's legal challenge to the university's Long Range Development Plan, EIR, approved late September of last year. Second item is Sunset Farms LLC versus the City of Santa Cruz, currently pending in the Santa Cruz Superior Court. There was no reportable action on those second, second and third items. Lastly, the council received a report from its negotiator and gave direction on the real property items that I mentioned at the outset were referred to closed session. Property on Mount Herman Road, commonly known as Sky Park, and property at three-three-three Locust Street. There was no reportable action on those items. Should also mention for the record that Councilmember Goldar was absent from the closed session.
Thank you. Okay. That concludes our report on our closed session this morning. We will now move on to item nine on the agenda, the council meeting calendar. I'll call on the city clerk to provide any updates to the calendar.
I have no updates, but we skipped number eight. But I have no, nothing to add to the calendar.
Thank you. And item number eight, the city manager will report and provide updates on the city's business and any events of interest.
Thank you, Mayor Brunner and council. I'm happy to provide an update, although I look like a silhouette on the screen right now. Not that that's a problem. And I think Elizabeth is going to pull up the slide deck. All right. So I'll go ahead and jump into it. November is shaping up to be November is shaping up to be a really exciting election as we move for the first time to a district election and a independently elected mayor for the first time in Santa Cruz's history. There are some deadlines coming up that I wanted to make clear for the community and those that may be interested in running for one of the open council seats, that August 12th is the deadline for doing so. There is the possibility that that deadline will be extended if the district incumbents decide not to run for one of those seats. The city clerk won't make that determination until the deadline occurs on the 12th. But anyone that's interested in running, there's great information on our city's clerk's website, and you're welcome to reach out to the city clerk herself, and she'd be happy to chat about the process for, for pulling papers. This November, voters will elect council members for District 4, District 6, and as I mentioned, the first at-large mayor to a four-year term. We also know that on the ballot, we will have a decision around an empty home tax as well as amending the city's general and downtown plans under the initiative "Our Downtown, Our Future." And before the council for consideration this afternoon is a transient occupancy tax as well. So looking forward to moving through and hearing from the community in terms of their positions on those items. Next slide. As our local economy continues to rebound from the pandemic, our economic development team has been busy at work providing support to the downtown and our small businesses throughout Santa Cruz. A few things that I wanted to highlight that I thought would be of interest to the council and the community include, we just closed a second round of applications for six-month retail pop-up opportunities along Pacific Avenue. This is an opportunity for entrepreneurs, small businesses in our area that are interested in moving into a brick-and-mortar space, being able to do so at a lower cost, lower overhead. And our hope will be that these serve as incubator spaces and provide opportunities for more businesses to permanently locate in the downtown. We have a number of exciting new businesses, either relocating or moving into the downtown area. Those include Botanic and Lux. That's a business many of us are familiar with. We're excited to see them relocating to a larger, more prominent location in the downtown. We're also welcoming Motherlode, Santa Cruz, The Buzz Sushi, Angel Aura Boutique, and Big Basin Winery Tasting Room. So it's great to see those empty spaces coming back to life in our downtown area. Coming soon, as Halloween approaches, we'll have Spirit Halloween pop-up, Yoked Restaurant, Gobi Mongolian, and Farmers Insurance, Pedro Gonzalez Insurance Agency. All businesses moving into our downtown area, and of course, we are excited to have them. Next slide. I wanted to take a moment to also highlight the progress on the Newell Creek Dam project. This is a massive complex, and I would also add, a very cool project that our water department has been shepherding over the last several months and years. So some of the highlights include a two-year project to replace the inlet-outlet valves and pipeline. The reservoir line is complete, and the three new intakes are now fully installed. Excavation of approximately 1,500 feet of 11-foot diameter tunnel around the dam is complete. I had an opportunity to go out there and see this firsthand as the work was occurring. Massive project and exciting to see this really once-in-a-generation effort moving forward. What's next includes installation of a new 48-inch pipe installed inside the tunnel, roughly 1/3 or 500 feet. The tunnel will eventually be backfilled to prevent water from exiting. And again, this is a major infrastructure improvement and investment of our most important water source for, for our service area. So just want to give kudos to our water team for leading this effort. We're excited to see it come to completion. Next slide. Unfortunately, as many of us were closely watching the returns from the midterm election, the final vote tally confirmed that Measure F failed by razor-thin 50 votes. This measure would have generated much-needed revenue to support the standard and range of essential services that we pride ourselves on providing and that our community expects. With that said, we must pursue other revenue streams and continue to take a critical look at our operations, including ensuring that we are reaching full-cost recovery as well as looking at other operational efficiencies and ways of doing business differently so that we can operate within the resources we have. So big decisions to come. Of course, we'll be engaging the council and the community and our employees as we work through these challenging budget season we find ourselves in and will continue to move forward with working to get the city on a healthier financial footing. Next slide. And then lastly, I wanted to provide some brief updates on our ongoing homelessness response work. At our next meeting, the council will receive a quarterly homelessness response update with significant more, significantly more details on the wide range of work that our homelessness response team and all of our departments frankly are working collectively on. But I did want to provide some brief highlights based on some of that work that's underway. That includes the ongoing work around the oversized vehicle ordinance. As the council knows, that moved to an appeal process and hearing in front of the Coastal Commission on July 14th. The commission at that point in time, based on Coastal Commission staff recommendation, found substantial issue with some of the elements of the coastal permit and, and ordinance. As a result, that means that de novo hearing will be set later on this year where the commission will act on that permit. That gives us time, staff time, to work with Coastal Commission staff to try to resolve some of the concerns that were raised by both staff and the commission. And our hope is that when we reach the de novo hearing, that permit will get over the finish line and we can move towards full implementation of the ordinance. In the meantime, we continue to prioritize establishing the Tier 1, Tier 2, and Tier 3 safe parking programs. That's not waiting on the outcome of this de novo hearing. We know it's important that we have safe sleeping options for all individuals that may need one, and staff is continuing to make progress on that work. Lastly, I wanted to also just note and provide a quick update regarding the closure and restoration work around San Lorenzo Park and the benchlands. This is a tremendous amount of work occurring across several departments, working on the planned closure and restoration of the park. The first phase will include the fencing and closure of the upper park. That will be followed with fencing and closure of the benchlands itself. And the plan is to move through a phased closure and relocation of the campers that are currently residing in the park. That is contingent, of course, on also concurrently standing up additional shelter resources as part of that effort. So that work is ongoing. There's significant work happening every day, also in concert with our colleagues at the county. And Larry and Wally, our homelessness response manager, will have more details on that when he brings a quarterly update at your next meeting. That's all I have for now. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for that update.
May I ask a question?
Yes. Councilmember Calentari Johnson, and then Councilmember Cummings.
Thank you. When we get a update on August 23rd, will staff or can staff speak to the point-in-time count numbers that were just released? And what the county's response to it is, as I understand, they heard, they heard about that today at their board meeting?
Yes. In fact, thanks for, thanks for that question, Councilmember Calentari Johnson. So just last week, the county released the results of the first point-in-time count that had been conducted since pre-pandemic. We do intend on providing an update to the council and the community as part of the quarterly response update. As you noted, the board received an update today.
Thank you, Councilmember Calentari Johnson. Councilmember Cummings.
Yep. Similarly, I'm wondering if there's any information on what the, if the county is going to be standing up any additional services? I mean, I know that they just shut down the armory, and that has resulted in a lot of the people who were there didn't have a place to go now, either going to the benchlands or potentially other points in the city. And it should speak worth understanding, you know, how much shelter the county is providing currently versus the city so that I think people can be aware of what role the city's playing, what role the county's playing. And, and, you know, if it's disproportionately that the city's taking on a lot of this, I think it might be worth a conversation. How do we try to see how other jurisdictions, in particular the county, can step up more to help us with shelter?
Yeah. Thanks, thanks for the comment, Councilmember Cummings. And we have been meeting with our county colleagues on a regular basis. We have emphasized the fact that standing up additional emergency shelter is and will continue to be one of our top priorities. We are pursuing housing on several fronts, and that includes home key projects to try to access some of the state funding, pursuing additional permanent supportive housing opportunities. Those are all important, and we have a desperate need for additional shelter spaces throughout the county. So that, those conversations are ongoing. We've stressed that importance with the county, and we will continue to do so.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. That concludes the city manager's report. We move on to our consent agenda. These items are 10 through 25 on our agenda. For members of the public who are streaming this meeting, now is the time to call in if you would like to comment on items 10 through 25. Instructions should be coming up on your screen. Please remember to mute your streaming device and raise your hand either by dialing *9 on your phone or selecting the Raise Hand feature in the webinar controls on your computer. All items will be acted upon in one motion unless an item is pulled by a council member for further discussion. Are there any council members who wish to comment on or pull any items? We'll start on the end. Councilmember Calentari Johnson? Comment on 14. Councilmember Cummings?
I'm going to pull 14. I have a comment on, or question for 18.
Pull 14 Cummings and question on 18?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watkins?
I had a comment on 14 and then a comment on 15.
And Councilmember Brown?
I have a comment on 22.
Thank you.
22.
Councilmember Brown, 22. Okay. I'll start with the comments and the questions. And since 14 was polled, we'll start with a comment on item number 15. Vice Mayor Watkins?
I just want to thank my colleagues, Councilmember Brown and Mayor Brunner, as well as the city attorney's office, and for all the due diligence and work that went into the investigation. And just wanted to make a comment in that, you know, we take seriously the importance of creating a respectful workplace and environment for our workers and interactions, and we'll do all we can to further refine and improve our policies and uphold what we value, which is a respectful and safe workplace for all. And hopefully that this individual who felt comfortable comes, you know, feels more at ease now that we've done this investigation and have come to this conclusion. And just really want to thank everybody for putting in the due diligence and time to ensure that we are upholding our standards for a safe and respectful workplace. And that concludes my comments.
Thank you so much. And item 15 is the sister city's committee member code of conduct issue. Thank you. We have a comment on item number 22, the Santa Cruz grand jury response, and that was Councilmember Brown.
Yeah. I, I just wanted to say, this is a response to the grand jury report on City of Santa Cruz water delivery system, our water delivery system. And, you know, we have on our consent agenda, almost every meeting, a number of items that reflect the significant amount of work that goes into our, you know, really rebuilding our aging water infrastructure and improving our water delivery. And they kind of go by with little fanfare and not very controversial, but it represents a huge amount of work, a huge investment, and really the very capable water department staff that we have. I know I say this often, but I just wanted to say that, that, and, and as my introduction to just making a comment on this item, I also have a tremendous amount of respect for the, the people who serve on our grand jury. They take that job very seriously. They do a lot of work, and, and I appreciate the, the comments that were shared and, you know, and I know that that was, that was a lot of work, and it was based on real, you know, thoughtful engagement. So, and so the responses being what they are, I just wanted to really thank our water director, Rosemary Menard, for putting together such a clear, you know, set of responses that I think are really explained in, in a way that we don't get to talk about in these meetings, what our water department does and the seriousness with which these issues are addressed. So for people who are interested in what's going on with our, our water system and the work that's happening here, I recommend looking at it. I think it's just really like clear and articulate and helpful. And with much gratitude to the water department staff.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. We have a question on item number 18.
Thank you, Mayor. Number 18 is with regards to the state route 1-9 intersection improvements, the contract amendment, and this is less so about the contract amendment and more so about the improvements that are occurring at Highway 1-9. I think about a week ago, there was a woman who was crossing that intersection with a four-year-old child who was hit by a car and who ended up dying because of her injuries, and her son or their child survived. And in 2017, I actually had a friend who was struck at that same intersection and who was killed. And so this is something that's very personal to me because as many people have reached out with concerns around the expansion of Highway 1-9, a lot of it's been around pedestrian safety and how are we going to make sure that pedestrians are going to, how the, the intersection improvements will improve pedestrian safety. And given that this is the second fatality we've seen at that intersection in roughly the past five years, I'm just wondering if we can get an update on kind of as we're making these improvements and what is being done so that we can reduce these kinds of deaths from occurring at this intersection?
I would, hi, are you here to give an update? Wonderful. I wasn't sure if someone would be available to respond on the spot or, okay, thank you.
Joshua Spenger, Senior Civilian here, Public Works. Improvements at the intersection, the current project that's happening right now, there's, there's not a whole lot more that we can do to improve pedestrian safety there. I mean, we are formerly there, well, still right now, southbound one, if you want to turn right on the southbound River Street, there was a free right there. So pedestrians would have to cross the turn lane and then the main line to cross. That's going away. So that's going away. We're putting all updated AD8 ramps and improvements on all the, all the crossings. But there's, unless, unless Caltrans wants to spring for an overcrossing or something, there's really not a whole lot more that can be done. The median is being widened, so there will be more pedestrian refuge if you cross the main line there. But other than that, I mean, new signals, new lights, and that's, that's about all the, the project is doing pedestrian safety.
As a follow-up, I'm wondering if there's any opportunities. I know, for example, when you're getting off some, certain highways throughout parts of the United States, they'll have a kind of like rumble strips that kind of force you to slow down, slow your speed. And I'm just wondering if there might be the potential for consideration around something like that to be solved in the future?
I'm, I'm not entirely sure. That's something that the Caltrans would have to address, that all the design out there has to, because it is a state intersection, although it's a city project, it's a state intersection. So any improvements, everything out there has had to go through Caltrans review and geometrics and everything else. So if it's, if it's allowed by Caltrans, I don't know if it is. I mean, we could, I suppose we could explore that, but as it's designed, it's certainly not envisioned that that's going to be included in the intersection at this point.
Thank you. Well, I guess I'll just say as a comment that if there's an opportunity for us to reach out to Caltrans and explore other ways to make this intersection safer, that, you know, we can get people that, there's, you know, physical mechanisms for getting cars to slow down as they're approaching that, especially at night. I think it would be worth a pursuit.
Thank you, Councilmember Cummings. I think it's important, and I will ask Nathan. I think it's important, and I will ask Nathan Nguyen with Public Works to also speak to this.
Yes, good afternoon, Councilmembers of the public. Nathan Nguyen, Assistant Director of Public Works, City Engineer. I just wanted to add on top of what Josh Vanegan was explaining, is that the, the intersection obviously is maintained or owned by Caltrans right away, but we are working with them on doing an expansion of that intersection with regards to the Tenerife Arts Center. So we are, we do have subsequent meetings with them as far as developing this, further developing the intersection, so we can definitely bring up some of the ideas of essentially rumble strips and to enhance that intersection.
I was going to also add that I think it's everybody's priority for our community's public safety at that intersection. There is an underpass to, along the River Walk. However, I know that not everyone uses the underpass, and so whatever we can do to advocate and ensure that our safety, pedestrian safety measures are put into place would be appreciated. Thank you. We have one more member. This is, um... I haven't gone to public comment yet, so when I go to public comment, you, you're welcome to comment on that. Thank you. That's it for your question? Okay. So now at this point, we will go for, I'm looking for a motion on all, um, we're going to public comment, and then I will look for a motion on all of the items except item 14. So, public comment, I will look to our attendees virtually to see if there are any hands raised. You can raise your hand by dialing *9. And while that is in process, I will now invite our member of the public to step forward for public comment. Thank you.
Hi, hi Sonia. I, I actually lived very near that corner for about a half a year, and there was an accident out there one night, and, and, you know, it was, it was, uh, it was a, it was a couple who were visiting, and it was a, you know, a couple of kids from around here, and, and one of them I actually had known since he was very, very young, young. You know, he was not the driver, but he was in the, the vehicle that, you know, we don't, we don't know, but it is a very inherently dangerous intersection. It's very busy, it's very, it's, it's a cluster, you know, of traffic flow, and I guess I would invite Council to look at solutions that are just, just along the lines of, you know, I want to say signage, warnings, and suggestions about like how people should navigate that intersection. Very tragic what happened last week, that's, it's just awful to hear about, right? And I, I have a, I have a friend who, I met him when he was a grad student at UCSE, he, his, his thesis was about suggestions, basically. It was like, if you tell someone you're gonna enjoy this burrito a lot, a lot, you know, and they eat it, I mean typically they will more if you tell, I mean, and people make their decisions based on that. So, I mean, signage, you know, saying, please, uh, slow down and, and navigate this intersection carefully, you know, words like that, and, and, you know, sentiments like that, you know, and, and actually, like, well-produced signage, it actually makes a difference, I believe. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I wonder if I could just interpose a comment. I, I think all the questions, excuse me, all the questions about safety of the intersection are completely appropriate, but I want us to be careful about too quickly attributing a tragic accident to the condition of the intersection when there are human factors involved, and a lot of investigation has to, has to occur before determination is made as to causation. So I just want us to be careful about making comments about the safety of the intersection, which is, which is constructed in accordance with very strict standards dictated by Caltrans. So, so again, all appropriate questions and concerns raised, but I don't want us to judge the outcome of this particular incident based exclusively on general notions of, of the safety of the intersection.
Thank you for that, yep. A state highway that runs right through our city, and, you know, we can really make sure that whatever we can advocate for in terms of the most safety possible in that intersection is, in general, is, is where we need to be. So, thank you. Thank you for all the information and for the comments. At this point then, if that concludes public comment, I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda items 10 through 25, with the exception of item 14, which has been pulled by Councilmember Cummings.
I'm happy to go ahead and move the consent agenda with the exception of 14.
Okay, we have a motion by Vice Mayor Watkins and a second by Councilmember Brown. And City Clerk, may we have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Calentari Johnson?
Aye.
Holder?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Watkins?
Aye.
And Mayor Brunner?
Aye. That motion passes unanimously. And now we will move on to item number 14, and 14 is a support for the protection of reproductive rights in various California legislative bills. And Councilmember Cummings, you had pulled this, and Councilmember Calentari Johnson, you had a comment.
Great, so first of all, I want to thank the councilmembers who authored this for bringing this forward. It's something that I think we're all very much interested in, and I know our community is very much interested in ensuring that we're protecting the reproductive rights of people in our community, especially in light of the Supreme Court decision to overturn Roe v. Wade. I pulled this item because I had some additional language for consideration to incorporate, and since, in order to make any kind of amendments to a consent agenda item, it has to be pulled, so I've pulled it for that reason. And I guess when, maybe after we go up for public comment, I can incorporate that into a motion or make a second, a separate motion for consideration.
Great, thank you. I will move over to Councilmember Calentari Johnson for comment.
Right. Oh, and yeah, and Vice Mayor Watkins.
Okay.
Just a, just a brief comment, wanted to thank the mayor and vice mayor for partnering and putting this on the agenda. As Councilmember Cummings just said, this is front of mind for all of us across the country, given the decision on Roe versus Wade, and it's important for our city to reconfirm our position on reproductive rights. So, just wanna thank my colleagues for considering this and interested in hearing your additions, Councilmember Cummings.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Watkins?
I just too wanted to thank my colleagues for the work on this and the staff who helped us compile the agenda report, and just really reiterating the importance of upholding our reproductive rights. You know, certainly that matters for certain genders over others, and the impacts are tremendous. And in California, we can do our part, at the local level, we can do our part, and then also at the national level, we can have our place as well, knowing that we are afforded a lot of benefits that in other states we're not seeing awarded to them, and add a concern for primarily the women and individuals of genders who are able to bear children. The impacts that we're seeing in other states are just infuriating. And so as, as a woman, I feel very, very passionately about this and very happy to bring this forward and doing this small bit that we can at the local level, knowing that there's more that we can do also at the national level as well. So, thank you both.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Watkins. I will now go out to public comment on this item number 14, support for the production, for the protection of reproductive rights in various California legislative bills. I will look to our virtual attendees to see if any hands are raised. If you'd like to raise your hand to speak to this item, press *9 on your phone or use the Raise Hand feature in the webinar controls. And I will look to our members of the public to see if anybody would like to speak to item 14 on our agenda. Seeing none, I will bring it back to Councilmember Cummings for your additions.
Great, so in addition to the support for the various state assembly bills and senate bills, one thing to also highlight is that this is gonna be on our ballot this year for the November elections, and it's, in the past, there have been times when the City of Santa Cruz has taken a position to endorse state ballot measures, and so the language that I was hoping to include as a friendly amendment would be to direct staff to bring back a resolution for consideration by the City Council to formally endorse and support California Proposition 1, Right to Reproductive Freedom Amendment, which if passed would support amending the state constitution to prohibit the state from interfering with or denying an individual's reproductive freedom, which is defined to include a right to an abortion and a right to contraceptive by no later than the second meeting in September. And so I'm happy to move all the, the recommended items and then with this in addition to that.
Okay, I'll give councilmembers a moment to read through that added item three to the motion, and I'll read it out loud, direct staff to bring back a resolution for consideration by City Council to formally endorse and support California Proposition 1, Right to Reproductive Freedom Amendment, which if passed would support amending the state constitution to prohibit the state from interfering with or denying an individual's reproductive freedom, which is defined to include a right to an abortion and a right to contraceptive by no later than our second meeting in September. Okay, a motion's been made.
And I'm, I'm happy to second, but I do want to also just state that, that we, in a past consent agenda, did write a letter of support in regards to Proposition 1, so I think this is a great next step.
Thank you, Councilmember Calentari Johnson. So we have a motion by Councilmember Cummings, seconded by Councilmember Calentari Johnson to add that additional language of formal endorsement. Vice Mayor Watkins?
I just have a question, if, if that needs to come back, or if we could just incorporate our formal endorsement into the recommendation now?
Yeah, I, because that item is not on the agenda, it was my recommendation to Councilmember Cummings that it be brought back.
Okay, got it.
Thank you. Okay, may we have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Calentari Johnson?
Aye.
Holder?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Myers?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Watkins?
Aye.
Mayor Brunner?
Aye. That motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, next up on the agenda is consent public hearing. Let me... Okay, pulling those notes up. Consent public hearing are items number 26 and 27 on our agenda. For members of the public who are streaming this meeting, if you wish to comment on items 26 and 27, now is the time to call in using the instructions on your screen. All items will be acted upon in one motion unless an item is pulled by a council member for further discussion. I would also like to make a, a comment. I understand there has been an update to one of the conditions of approval on item number 27, and you all should have a copy of that update. And I think I will, is Timothy Meyer, Senior Planner, available to speak to that or answer questions?
I am mayor, thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you, appreciate it. Good afternoon, Mayor Brunner, members of the City Council. As Mayor Brunner mentioned, my name is Tim Meyer, Senior Planner with the city. Staff's memo prepared earlier today discusses the minor revisions to Condition of Approval Number 17 of the Project CP 21 0060. I'm happy to provide a brief overview of the recommended changes to that Condition of Approval as needed. If no discussion is deemed appropriate, staff feel that the item may remain on the consent calendar, with staff's continued recommendation for council approval of the application, including updated Condition of Approval Number 17. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Myers?
Is it appropriate, just, just to clarify, maybe for the public, that my understanding is that there were some timeframes put on that Condition of Approval, and that's the main, minor, that those are the, the major change to that condition, is that correct?
That's correct, Councilmember. Essentially, timeframes were introduced into Condition of Approval Number 17 to prevent the application from kind of lingering indefinitely and subject to HOA approval of, of the request. So I'd be happy to share that Condition of Approval if that's helpful. Share my screen.
Thank you for clarifying that. We can go into further discussion if that item is pulled at this point as consent public hearing, items 26 and 27. I will ask, are there any councilmembers who wish to comment on or pull any items? Okay, seeing none. I will go out to public comment for items number 26 and 27. If there are any members of the public, you can raise your hand. Any attendees virtually, I will look to those attendees, seeing none. I will look to in person, and we have one person who would like to speak to either item 26 or 27. Welcome.
Aye. Uh, yeah, uh, thank you. Uh, I, uh, as recently as, this spring, I've, I've been a hotel desk clerk, I've worked at hotels. I want to say, as far as the, the county's economy goes, if you pull all of the hotels into one entity, if you said they were all one company, for instance, then it would, it would be the, maybe the second largest employer in the county.
Which item are you speaking to?
29, or 20, the transient occupancy tag.
We're not there yet.
Oh, okay. You, I, I thought you said both were, I'm sorry.
26 and 27, I apologize, maybe I should...
That was my last chance to talk on.
Thank you. I just, I wanted to be clear. So items 26 is second reading and final adoption of ordinance number 2022-11, Second Amendment of the 555 Pacific Avenue Apartments Development Agreement. And item 27 is the 109 South Repeta Road application, and that is a long title, but those are the two items we're taking public comment on right now. Thank you. Okay, seeing none. I will bring it back to councilmembers. I'm looking for a motion on our consent public hearing items.
I'm happy to move items 26 and 27.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Holder.
I'm happy to second that.
I'll second that.
Okay. Seconded by Councilmember Myers. May we have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Calentari Johnson?
Aye.
Holder?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Watkins?
Aye.
Mayor Brunner?
Aye. That motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Item number 28 is next on our agenda. Item number 28... Item number twenty-eight. This is the Transportation and Public Works Commission Appointment. For members of the public who are streaming this meeting, if this is an item you wish to comment on, now is the time to call in using the instructions that should be up on your screen. We will also look to any members of the public who wish to comment on item twenty-eight, Transportation and Public Works Commission Appointment. We will begin with public comment, and then I will call on City Clerk Bonnie Bush to lead the council through nominations and action. Are there any members in the virtual public that would like to comment? I'm not seeing any hands raised. Okay, I will bring it back to in-person. I'm not seeing members of the public who would like to speak to this item. So I will now hand it over to City Clerk Bonnie Bush.
Thank you, Mayor. If anybody has a nomination that they want to start with, we can start with you. And then if anyone has any new ones, we can go from there.
Chad Mitchum.
Councilmember Myers has her hand up.
Councilmember Myers?
Ryan Meckel.
Are there any other nominations for this appointment? Okay, we have two nominations.
I'll do a roll call, we have Ryan Meckel or Chad Mitchum. One vote. Councilmember Calentari Johnson?
Ryan Meckel.
Golda?
Ryan Meckel.
Cummings?
Chad Mitchum.
Brown?
Chad Mitchum.
Myers?
Ryan Meckel.
Vice Mayor Watkins?
Ryan Meckel.
Mayor Brunner?
Ryan Meckel.
Ryan Meckel.
Okay, congratulations and thank you for serving on our Transportation and Public Works Commission. Next on our agenda is item number twenty-nine. This is the resolution requesting the placement of a transient occupancy tax increase on the ballot of the November eighth, two thousand twenty-two California statewide general election. This is a recommendation from the Ad hoc Revenue Committee, which consists of myself, Councilmember Brown, and Vice Mayor Watkins. And I'd like to ask the City Clerk, when you're ready to pull up, I have a couple slides just to help me talk through. Thank you. So our Ad hoc Revenue Committee meets bi-weekly, and we've explored several opportunities and options. This is an authorized tax that we see as an opportunity to use Santa Cruz's large tourism industry as a revenue stream to fund essential services here in the city. Next slide. So this measure, we hope, would align with the county. The county recently passed Measure B. It includes an increase on the rate for commercial lodging from eleven percent to twelve percent. And it increases the rate for vacation rental properties from twelve, eleven percent to fourteen percent. The county measure was approved by nearly seventy percent of county voters. And our city TOT tax has been at eleven percent since two thousand thirteen. So we would align with County, Capitola, and the City of Watsonville. Next slide. Thank you. The anticipated revenue that this would yield is approximately one point four annually. And here it's broken down, the commercial yield would be approximately nine hundred ninety-eight thousand and residential three hundred eighty-two thousand. Next slide. After exploring all of our options, there are many benefits that we found with this recommended transient occupancy tax. And really, it just creates parity with the county and creates a fair and level playing field across the region. It also helps to ensure that visitors and tourists pay their fair share for city services and focuses on the services that are most important to the community. It also really provides flexible funding, which allows the city to adapt to changing community needs over time. Next slide. So our recommended actions are before you and in the agenda packet. It's to accept the update on the recent work of the committee. And two, to adopt a resolution requesting that the consolidated November eighth, two thousand twenty-two California statewide general election include a general purpose tax proposing that the City of Santa Cruz's current transient occupancy tax rate of eleven percent be increased to twelve percent for hotels, motels, inns, and other commercial lodging facilities. And from eleven percent to fourteen percent for short-term residential vacation rental properties. And support the measure for the purposes of authoring arguments, providing direction regarding the authors, directing the city attorney to prepare the impartial analysis, and providing direction to the city manager regarding the preparation of the fiscal analysis as appropriate. We did, I also wanted to include some outreach that we were able to do and wanted to acknowledge a lot of the challenges that some of our hoteliers have had in recent years and have really been squeezed with COVID and declining bookings, also with CZU lightning fires and many other challenges in staffing. And we really hope to be able to continue to work together and provide support and have this funding source be a support to the city services that we can provide. And is there any other further comments from Councilmember Brown or Vice Mayor Watkins?
I'll just briefly say that I just appreciate your summary of how we landed here and what we're asking our colleagues to consider at this time. And just appreciation for the outreach and the work that has gone on, not only internally in terms of our subcommittee and all those who are participating at the city level, but also in terms of being able to reach out to some of our key stakeholders in our community. And yes, thank you for the nice summary of the recommended actions.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would just add my appreciation for the committee, my colleagues on the council and the staff that's worked with us to bring this forward today. I will say, just for the little history, I have been on a series of revenue committees here at the city, and this is something that has been considered as recently as two thousand nineteen. We did, you know, due to COVID, kind of backed off on a lot of the, you know, movement forward on this revenue measure and obviously other matters. But I feel, and we, and it's been ten years since the TOT has been raised. And so I think that, given the challenges that the hotel industry has faced and that history, that this is a very measured proposal moving forward and being in line with the county. I'll just say for folks out there, if you vote in the city, you voted on the county measure, and that applies to county hotels and Airbnbs. And that will be the case for city hotels and short-term vacation rentals for this pass. And with that, I'd just say thanks to everybody for getting us here.
Thank you. Let's see, let me go back to the agenda. Okay, so at this time, are there any questions from councilmembers? And let me look at Councilmember Myers, none, okay. Don't want to miss you. So no questions, I will now go out to the public comment. And I will look to in-person, okay, welcome.
Thanks, yeah, I wanted to point out that, you know, not everybody that uses the hotels and motels here are out-of-town tourists, and that many of the people who live outside do get one or two nights a month for the purposes of a shower, because they can't get it any other way. And I did pay eighteen hundred dollars in the hotel tax at the beginning of COVID. And paid, I have to put people in hotels. So, but I'm not, you know, that's just something to consider, so that we're just not assuming it's all tourists that have money. Although a lot of those tourists are working people with not much money either. And, but I do, and also, I worked with many of the hotel owners in town on making accommodations for people who live outside, who either are convalescing from surgeries or whatever, that we need to help out. So I do know they are struggling as well, so any way to aid them would be fantastic. Thank you very much for your help, bye-bye.
Thank you. Our next member of the public?
When I first worked at a hotel in two thousand and ten, I believe that the top was ten percent. And that seemed high, that seemed high. And if you look at it, just as, you know, from that, from then to the step up to eleven percent, well, that was a million in revenue, and then now it's another million in revenue. So it's a lot, it's a lot of money that can be applied to lots of things. But I think Keith Wright, you know, not everybody that is coming to town is dressed in a Hawaiian shirt and Bermuda shorts and has money, you know, falling out their ears. You know, it's inflationary, it adds to what the person pays, the bottom line that they pay for the hotel room. And it's kind of insignificant, the Airbnb stuff, the short-term vacation rentals, that's and that's that three percent amounts to, you know, less than, it seems like it amounts to less than a third of what you're making from all the various individual hotels. And again, I just feel, I feel it's inflationary and kind of in its basis. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your public comment. We have a hand raised in our virtual. I will go out to, I am watching you is the name. Go ahead and press star six to unmute yourself.
Yeah, thanks. You cannot say there won't be unintended consequences of this tax increase to the tourist travel industry. You just hope there isn't. The measure states the money is to be used for essential city services and not toward any particular benefit to those industries targeted or those who pay. I disagree that affordable housing for working families and the homeless are creating local jobs falls under any normal essential city service definition. But I get it, you have to fluff somehow to get approval for is essentially undefined purpose permanent money grab. Logic would indicate you are not currently then providing these essential city services. One wonders why not. Perhaps the answer lies in the definition of such or any acknowledgement of a lack of fiscal discipline. I see, though, we need money to spend, please, but no case was made, a more efficient satisfactory government is impossible without it. Government doesn't have to be, or it should be, an above economic trend growth industry considering it doesn't actually produce wealth and mostly spends other people's money. Private citizens build wealth and security by living at or really beneath their means. I took a look at California TOT rates and using the State Controller's data for two thousand and twenty, I find seventy-five percent of the cities have a TOT tax rate of eleven percent or mostly less. Ours is currently at the top end of that at eleven, and twenty-five percent of the cities have a rate of twelve percent or more. By far, the most common tax rate is ten percent, although twelve and eight are the next most common. Only six percent of cities have a rate over the twelve percent proposed. The very highest TOT rate cities are super attractive wine country tourist cities like Yalesburg, Yountville, Sonoma, or expensive international destination cities like San Francisco and LA. Modern rate is only ten percent, but Little PG with the world-class aquarium, yeah, it's twelve percent. As to whether Santa Cruz comparatively has the tourist attractiveness that supports this high rate, to me, is an unknown. Raising taxes in a recession lacks climbing wisdom. As to the short-term residential vacation well rate, by comparison, a fourteen percent hotel rate would be the highest of the high rates. Do you have an in for them? Your arguments are weak that they didn't pay one-time lower permit fees long ago now justifies a permanent high tax disadvantage now, or that they disproportionately affect neighborhoods. They are basically normal residences and look like very attractive properties to me. The reality is, when the economy grows or booms, the TOT revenue goes up and has gone up a lot over time. It doesn't matter when the last time it was raised. A permanent tax increase, to me, dictates or indicates a government failure to employ fiscal discipline. I listened to some of you bemoaning cutting any city expenses, other response to pending financial doom, such as personnel saying, oh, no, those real people with real jobs, as if that doesn't happen every day, or the practice of hiring city employees at twice the rate of population growth, or passing out an extra national paid holiday to all city employees when they already get twelve, means you don't get the message that taking a bigger and bigger, more expensive government bite out of the economy is not a sustainable economic. Thanks.
Thank you for your public comment. Are there any other hands raised? We have the name Casey Byer. Go ahead and press star six to unmute yourself.
Thank you, Mayor Brunner and councilmembers. Casey Byer from the Santa Cruz County Chamber of Commerce. Many of the hotels and motels in Santa Cruz are members of the Santa Cruz County Chamber and have been for years. We do not oppose the increase specifically, but would question the timing. Clearly, the city is running structural deficit, and once you, the failure of the measure, sales tax measure in June, there's a need to get additional revenue streams. We get that, we understand that the city has to find revenue to provide the city services that the community wants. My two questions are, did you do any real outreach to the hotel industry before making this decision? And if not, I would encourage you, before you put this on the ballot, that you have that engagement. Many of the hotel owners and property managed people don't live in Santa Cruz. So they don't have an opportunity to vote on a tax that impacts not only their business, but their employees. I think it's critically important that they be part of the conversation. You mentioned stakeholders, but you didn't mention specifically what stakeholders you did outreach. I talked to several of the owners of some of the hotels yesterday, and they told me that they received an inquiry at four PM on Thursday before you place this on this agenda today. So I would encourage you to actually use them, they're a major employer in the county, in and in the city, and they do pay taxes and create great revenue streams for the city. Also, missing out of the conversations, even though it's an increase to twelve percent to match the counties, that's actually a ten percent increase on the cost of that room. And secondly, when the hotels do group rates, that additional cost figures into whether or not they come to Santa Cruz as a group or they go somewhere else. So those are all conversations that I've had in the last couple of days with the hotel folks. And they're deeply concerned that you may impact their ability to bring visitors in groups that usually come in the off-season or the shoulder season, not during the summer season. And those corporate folks cater to our hotels, cater to our restaurants in the downtown. So I think you had everything broader about what this. So I think you add everything broader about what this, this tax will do and potentially the conflict.
Thank you for your public comment. Are there any other attendees for a public comment on this item? Okay, I will bring it back, seeing none. And none in person. I will bring it back to council for action and deliberation. I'm looking for a motion on this item.
I'll go ahead and move item twenty-nine, resolution requesting the placement of a transient occupancy tax increase on the ballot of the November eighth, twenty-twenty-two California statewide general election.
We have.
Oh, I'm sorry, I just read the wrong part. I did read the right part.
We have a motion by Councilmember Golda, seconded by Vice Mayor Watkins. And is there any further discussion?
I have a question.
Yes.
I'm just wondering, one of the members of the public asked about kind of outreach and engagement, and I just wanted to see if we can maybe get information on, on that question and see if somebody can answer that question for them.
Yeah, I can speak to our committee and the work that we've done. This was investigative and we spoke with a couple of hoteliers, I did, along with city staff. In order to bring this to a vote for the November ballot, I think the real engagement will begin and continue, most certainly. If we vote to place this on the ballot, there is a lot of discussion and engagement with the hoteliers, with Airbnb, property owners and various community members. We also do and did in our research and discussion realize that even though this is a transient occupancy tax and primarily born to hotel guests and vacation guests, that is not the case always. There are also local folks and, and people who need a room for the night, who are unhoused. So it is used in many ways and we hope to have those further engagement and understand that to a, to a bigger level. And I don't know if city manager, if you were going to speak to that as well.
Thanks, Mayor, and I see that Councilmember Brown wants to chime in as well as one of the committee members, so I'd welcome her thoughts. So that, that outreach will be ongoing. Our economic development team, Bonnie Lipscomb, our, our economic development director, has been having direct conversations with several of our, of our key hoteliers just over the past week and, as I understand it, over the weekend. And if the council makes the decision to place this on the ballot, those conversations, of course, will, will be ongoing. So we're, we're committed to moving forward with this effort in a transparent collaborative way with, with our hotelier stakeholders. And, you know, I'll also just admit that this has been a condensed timeframe. We were waiting for final certification of the Measure F results, weighing, weighing the implications of that outcome and what would make the most sense for the city moving forward based on a number of variables. So that didn't lend itself to having the more robust dialogue that we would typically have. But of course, we're open to continuing those conversations.
Thank you. I see Councilmember Myers and then Councilmember Brown.
Actually, Mayor, my, some of my questions were answered by the city manager and by yourself, so I'll put my hand down.
Thank you. Councilmember Brown.
I'll just add with, on the institutional memory angle. So I, I take that very seriously, the, the question and the comments about our engagement with affected businesses. And, you know, I want to appreciate Mayor Brunner, your efforts to engage in, in some of that, in some of those conversations on the, you know, very condensed timeframe. But this is also a conversation that has been ongoing really since 2019 with the hotel industry. And I, as with Councilmember Matthews at the time, met with many, many representatives of, of the hotels and Visit Santa Cruz. And, you know, we had a series of sessions and packed conference rooms. So, and, and the concerns are the same, in many ways, the same, so, you know, some things haven't changed. And the timing is, you know, being what it is, I think one of the reasons that we looked at a really measured proposal. So those conversations are ongoing, they will be ongoing. And, you know, so I don't think it was necessarily a surprise for the hoteliers that this was coming. It's, it's really been ongoing. I just wanted to kind of include that as evidence of how seriously we take this.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown, and I'd like to call on Director of Economic Development, Bonnie Lipscomb.
Thank you, Mayor, and I just wanted to add some comments about the outreach and engagement. And this, this hasn't been a typical timeline. And I think the comments by the Director of the Chamber, Casey Byer, are, are critical, well-met. And we have been doing some coordination in the last week, particularly to have a set of meetings both with Visit Santa Cruz as well as with the hoteliers. And so we have a few hoteliers involved also in Visit Santa Cruz who are in the process of helping us set up an initial meeting. And then we're going to have hopefully a few more meetings and then regular meetings going forward just to keep the lines of communication open about what we, the revenue for in general. You know, are many of the same things that are interested, a top sort of priorities by the hotels. And those are top priorities for the city. So I think a lot of our interests are very well-aligned going forward and communication is the key to that. So we will be working with our hoteliers in the months ahead. And similar to how we were pre-pandemic, having much more extensive outreach and engagement for our lines or overall tourism economy here in Santa Cruz.
Thank you, Director Lipscomb. And Councilmember Cummings, one more question?
No, I was just going to follow up on the initial question I asked about this because, so I also was on the Revenue Committee in 2020 and remember that we had a number of occasions where we met and it was a very large group meeting with a lot of the different hotel owner, hoteliers and hotel owners. And at that time, there was polling that took place. And I think even thinking back to then, you know, they were comfortable or it seemed like the number was more around one percent for the hotels at that time. And so I bring that up because I know that we've also received communications from people in the community who have asked for more and why aren't we increasing it more? And I just want to express that even going back to then, the direction that the council is taking is very similar to what we were going to be considering at that time, seeing that this passed at the county level and that now we have an opportunity for it to pass at the city level and there was not real strong opposition from the hotel industry. I just want to express that, I want to thank my colleagues for their work on this. I think that this is, you know, a safer step that we can take at this point in time. And while other folks may want to see us increase the TOT more, I think there's a lot of valid points as well around the impacts that this can have on working class and lower-class people who may also want to have access to hotels. So I'm supportive of this, but also really wanted to see if we could have that question answered. And, and that's all, I'll leave it at that.
Thank you so much. Okay. It looks like we have a motion on the floor by Councilmember Golda, seconded by Vice Mayor Watkins for item number twenty-eight. And I'd like to ask the city clerk to please call roll. Twenty-nine.
Councilmember Calentari Johnson?
Aye.
Golda?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Watkins?
Aye.
And Mayor Brunner?
Aye. That motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next on our agenda, we have item number twenty-nine, resolution request, oh, we just finished that, sorry, I'm bringing up the notes. We are now at, Oral Communications will be at five-thirty, so it is four-forty-one. We will have a break until Oral Communications at five-thirty. Oral Communications will be an opportunity for members of the community to speak to items that are not on today's agenda. So we look forward to seeing you all at five-thirty, thank you. All right, good evening, we've returned from our break and we are now at the point of the agenda for Oral Communications. Is the city clerk ready?
I am, thank you.
Oral Communications is an opportunity for members of the community to speak to us on items that are not on today's agenda. For members of the public that are joining us virtually and streaming this meeting, if you'd like to comment during Oral Communications, now is the time to call in, instructions will be on your screen. If you are interested in addressing the council, raise your hand either by dialing star nine on your phone or select the raise hand feature in the webinar controls of your computer. You will have two minutes to speak. Members of the public who wish to address the council in person, please line up to the right of the dais. You will each have two minutes to speak, I will call on you when the time is right. We request that you sign in to ensure correct spelling of your name in the meeting minutes, however, it is not required. Please remember, this is a time to hear from the public and we are not able to engage in dialogue with each member of the public. But when we are able, we'll, we'll address questions raised after Oral Communications has completed. And so I will begin by looking out to the virtual attendees. And I see the first hand raised is G. Lee Young. Hi there, go ahead and unmute yourself, welcome.
Beautiful, thank you so much, Madam Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, thank you.
Wonderful, okay, my name is, well, I'll go, my G. Lee Young and I'm part of the Moab group, Men Overcoming Abusive or Anger Angry Behavior. And we just wanted to reintroduce ourselves to the council and to the mayor to let you know that post-COVID, we're back in business again, group meetings. We've been having meetings on Thursday evenings, weekly, Thursday evenings at seven PM at the Resource Center for Nonviolence out there here in the city of Santa Cruz. We promote and discuss peace, harmony, coexisting, family, jobs, and community. And so we just wanted to let the council know that we're back in business and we're meeting on a weekly basis and we're doing quite well. Thank you so much for your time, you and the council.
Thank you very much. I will alternate and now I will invite the next member of the public in person. Please step forward, thank you.
Hello, I'm Andy Werner and I would like to, the reason I'm here is I would like to thank you, Ms. Brunner, your mayor, and the city council for the proclamation that led to the thirtieth of June being Andy Werner Day. I wasn't able to be here at that time and I wanted to thank you all in person. And I, really touched me very deeply, I thank, thank you, I felt, you know, a lot of appreciation and, and really it was a very, very wonderful feeling to, you know, fifty years. And one of the thoughts I had is right outside, the first job I had with the city, I'm a tar crew. And we tarred that street, hasn't been done since. And that's a good thing, that's one of the worst jobs you can imagine. But thank you all very much, I really, really appreciate that.
Thank you. Our next member of the public, I will do virtually, and it is phone number ending in four-eight-four-four. Go ahead and unmute yourself.
Real Solutions to the City's Bulldoze the Benchlands Crisis? Check out the RCNV, the Resource Center for Nonviolence, next Monday at six PM. Hear real Benchlands residents. Here are the city manager team, Huffaker, Butler, and Imwale invited to explain how they will squeeze the two-hundred to three-hundred Benchlands residents into the already mostly full spaces for two-hundred. How do we provide resources rather than threats? And real space rather than comforting fairy tales? Fences, force, and lawsuits with only token and disabled inaccessible places is the wrong way to go. Many more outsider regularly at risk under the city council's harsh new sleeping camping ban, which Huffaker has said will be enforced. Work on an emergency community response next Monday, six PM, at the RCNV at six-twelve Ocean Street. Something better than Huffaker's magical Disperse Them to Pacific Avenue, the neighborhoods, and the Pogonip solution. Support the expansion of the Benchlands to end the destructive overcrowding there. Establish smaller encampments, their truly low barrier. Acknowledge that the Benchlands residents have kept rough peace and civility there for more than two years. The Santa Cruz Union of the Homeless, Food Not Bombs, and Huff will be at the Monday RCNV six PM meeting in search of real solutions in action. Will city manager Huffaker and his lieutenants Butler and Imwale be there? We'll see. We'll see. Our community and supportive lawyers successfully fought a police and forced them out of town solution winter before last, when the community stood up to police harassment and violence against people who have no place to go other than the token spots that are already mostly filled. The SCPD's Hide Out or Get Out Plan is neither humane, feasible, cost-effective, nor legal.
Thank you for your comment. I will now go to the next person in person. Please step forward. Thank you, welcome.
Pleasure to be here, folks. This is my first appearance. Issues that I want to bring up are, I'm a naturalist. There are two natural springs on West Cliff. They're hidden in the cuts. Unfortunately, the planning commission allowed leaching instead of sumping, and they are horribly polluted. Also, I would like to mention the fact that the City Council and firefighters, which have been our heroes forever, do not even give tours anymore to the children that want to know about them, nor can they give out first aid kits. And when they have a first aid kit, in order to change their first aid kit out, they have to take a body to the hospital and then get another first aid kit from the shine. This is wrong. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. I will now go to virtual, and I will ask for the name "I Am Watching You."
Yeah, thanks. I can agree composting is a better use of food scraps than is landfill, but the mandated food scrap program shares similarities to the stench of the authoritarian climate change agenda in that it requires unquestionable unconditional compliance, doesn't offer opt-outs or exceptions for any reason, does not allow alternative ideas that is the government always knows best. We'll trash the budding private food scrap recycling program here has a yet unknown, probably very high cost of which we will all have to pay that you have not disclosed extra collection and trucking of the tons of this mush over Highway 17 to make into animal feed sounds awful for the animals, anyway. It is very heavy-handed, while also impossible to check compliance. Very possibly, this flunks one of my basic texts of all government programs, doesn't provide what the public needs, wants, and is willing to pay for. I realize this is not your idea, but the state in this case with an excuse like everything eco, saving the planet from us awful humans. No actual cost-benefit analysis presented for public approval. Where is it? That's a joke. It will be imposed by utility monopoly. It's hard to beat the efficiency, low cost, and soil improvements benefit of self-bearing food scraps in backyard vegetable gardens, but there's no opt-out for that. We pay anyway. It's missing a voluntary component. I don't regard food scraps as toxic waste. They are remnants of life. It's not capitalism. Again, it's authoritarian central planning. This is tame compared to the damage climate change mandates will do ignoring the consequences of energy starvation, economic chaos, reduced fertilizer supply, reducing the food supply resulting, I would think, in mass migration, pandemics, starvation, and war. We see it already in Sri Lanka, and Idioc plans to kill off half the national range herd in Holland. Those who would ban cattle need to understand one-third of the land on earth is grassland.
Thank you. I will now go to our next member of the public in person. Please step forward. Welcome.
Hi. Many of you probably remember the trolley. It was, it was, you know, maybe, I don't know. There's, I mean, it's always confused, you know, when you say, you know, something is a victim of COVID or the COVID era. I don't know. I mean, I think we should talk about, like, really where we are with COVID. More often, I know there's fatigue, you know, over that, you know, like, no one wants to talk about it. There's very few people here in person. There's me and a handful of other people. Normally, there's, you know, at least twice that many at council meetings. Basically, yeah, I think, I don't know. I think like this, this is one thing. The Exploration Center is open again. I'm happy, I'm happy to notice that they, that their Liquid Galaxy machine, someone, someone from local government could talk to Google directly perhaps and have that fixed up, because right now it's out of operation. I don't know. I like the idea, and this is, this is just me, because, you know, I'm kind of like an engineering architecture nerd, like your new building over here. I'm, you know, talking to those construction workers, and they're like telling me there's a pool on the top floor, and I'm kind of skeptical, but... I think you got, I mean, I think you should consider the possibility of actually tunneling through the purissimo sandstone. It's 1,000 feet. From here to the library is about 250 feet. If you're looking at four times that, that distance, where people could simply walk to the beach straight from Pacific, and then you wouldn't have to answer the, you know, annoying tourists who always ask you where the beach is. Okay, thanks. Bye.
Thank you for your comment. Let's see, our next person is virtual, and I will ask Serge Cagnon to unmute. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor Burner, City Council. Thank you for allowing me to speak this afternoon. My name is Serge Cagnon. I'm the Executive Director of Recovery Cafe Santa Cruz. I've spoken before about Recovery Cafe Santa Cruz, which presently has 49 independent recovery cafes across the US and Canada. Thank you, Councilmember Brown, who came to visit our program. Thank you, Councilmember Cummings, who had sat down with our group when we were first forming. In the Board of Supervisors discussion on homelessness, there was the talk of the intersection of mental health and substance use issues. I'd like to add also in that discussion that isolation and lack of community make it more challenging for many to engage in services. Many people experiencing homelessness are not willing to receive shelter or support services or consistently consistency in engaging in the support services they're receiving or need support to stay in housing. Recovery Cafe Santa Cruz believes everyone needs a community. I'd like to invite the City Council and the Board of Supervisors to accompany me for a tour of Recovery Cafe San Jose to see what partnership with the city of San Jose using CBDG funding can create. They have a beautiful environment to provide support services to increase service engagement, housing stability, and multiple outcomes of quality of life. I'll be sending an invite for a tour. If you're not available, I hope you're able to send a staff member in your place. I would also propose a pilot study showing the effect of Recovery Cafe, the Recovery Cafe model in Santa Cruz on placing people in housing and maintaining housing for our community. Thank you for your time. Have a good night.
Thank you for your comment. Our next public or oral communication comment is in person.
Thank you. Yeah, Keith McHenry. And first, Food Not Bombs has been sharing food with the hungry and providing water and hand washing and so on for, it'll be 900 days in a row on August 31st. Then, I'm, we are also providing a lot of the food in the benchlands, so we are there all the time, and we're friends with many of the people, and we understand a lot of their, the issues. And one of the things, people are obviously don't want to really live there, and they're concerned, of course, when the rainy season comes, it'll be an awful mess. So we held a union, San Francisco Homeless Union meeting yesterday, and about 20 people from the benchlands came, and they told very moving stories about the difficulties they have. One woman actually was up at, she called it Armory, but really it was Overlook. And she is in a walker, and she said that it was so frightening. The staff was so dictatorial and horrible that she found it was better to live in a bush down by Water Street. So here's a 70-year-old lady in a walker who is the recently widowed individual, who was so, she spoke out repeatedly about the horrors of participating in the shelter system, which is very tragic. Another woman lost her, was late to work, and when she had to give an excuse to her employer, she was put in a bind of having to admit she was homeless, which would jeopardize her job or try to hang on to her job somehow without admitting that she, you know, getting a note. And others have pointed out that, you know, that they really need a lot of support. So anyway, I'm inviting you to this meeting to hear the voices of the unhoused from the benchlands themselves and get an idea really what is going on, so that you...
Thank you very much for your oral communication comment. You can leave the sheets there at the front. I just want to make sure that's all the comments, and then we, if there's any questions, I know there were a couple of points brought up. And is there anybody else in the virtual world that would like to have any comment on Oral Communications, which is any item not on today's agenda? Okay, I'm not seeing any other hands. And there's no other Oral Communications in person? Okay. Councilmember Brown?
So I actually have an Oral Communication, which is "I'm Lee", and I just wanted to see if I could make that. I was going to go down there, but it's okay to just make a communication. First, I will say, just in response to the concern expressed about somebody at the Armory who may have difficulties navigating transportation with their work schedule, that's a significant concern of mine. I know others have raised it, and so I want to just underscore that, and I'll continue to ask questions about how we manage that as the city takes on operations there, or, you know, through a contract. But I'm just working with the Salvation Army, because I think it's a, it's really important that we incur, you know, we do everything we can to make it possible for people to have safe, a safe place to be and maintain employment for all of the obvious reasons. But my Oral Communication is, just really quickly, I wanted to announce, we didn't have Councilmember updates today, but tomorrow at the Santa Cruz Downtown Farmers Market is an opportunity for low-income seniors, 60 and over, if you're under 185% of median income, to get vouchers. And this is something that happens twice a year. It's a senior farmers market nutrition program. So look for the Seniors Council booth if you're planning to go to the Farmers Market tomorrow at 1 o'clock. This is the downtown market at Lincoln and Cedar there. You'll see a booth, and if you meet the criteria, you can get coupons, I believe it's $20, for fresh fruit and vegetables at the market. And it's one distribu-, or two distribution days a year, and tomorrow's the day for the downtown market. It also is happening across the county, and there are other sites, and you can find the information at the Seniors Council website.
Thank you for your Oral Communications. Are you here for Oral Communications? Hi there, welcome. Looks like we have one more member of the in-person. Are you, are you here to speak? We're just concluding Oral Communications. And Oral Communications is for any item not on today's agenda. You have the opportunity to address City Council.
Hello. Just wanted to let you guys know there's a benchlands meeting on Monday, August 15th, 2022, starting at 6:00 PM. It's a part of the Resource Center for Nonviolence, which is located at 612 Ocean Street, Santa Cruz, right across from the Paradox Hotel. This was, this meeting is going to be hosted by the Santa Cruz Homeless Union and Food Not Bombs. See you later.
Thank you for your public comment. All right, it looks like that concludes our public, our Oral Communications. And I would, I wonder if any of the, there were a couple of the concerns brought up, if that would be included in our August 23rd update to be addressed.
Yes, Mayor Burner, appreciate the questions that were raised. We will certainly address those as part of the quarterly update, including transportation to and from the shelter we have up at the Overlook.
Great. Thank you so much, and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.